All right, good evening. The time being seven o'clock and a quorum of the planning board being present, I call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval minutes for June 24th, 2019. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of June 24th, as written.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Just for a housekeeping issue, for anyone who's in the audience, Agenda Items D, E, and H, the applicant has requested be continued. So that's 1583 Andover Street, 1625 Andover Street, and 1037 at all, North Street, Andover Street. So if you're here for any of those hearings, they will not be heard this evening. I'm sorry, not the 1037, I thought 1420 Andover Street. We have so many with those addresses. So again, it's going to be 1583 Andover Street, which is Agenda Item D, 1625 Andover Street, which is Agenda Item E, and Agenda Item H, which is 1420 Andover Street. Those three have asked to be continued to our next meeting, so we won't take any testimony on those this evening, they'll just get continued when we get to them. The rest of the Agenda items we'll run through.
That's August 5th.
Correct. All right, so moving on to Committee Reports, anyone have any committee reports they'd like to make? Seeing none at this time, moving on to Agenda Item B2, which is Committee Appointment. So we have, is it in my pile or you have?
Well, I have a copy of that.
I know it was going to be here, but I'm aware of this. All right, so we're looking for, I mean, the actual paper, I was looking for the actual paper. So what it is, is it's a committee that's going to look into what happens to the Trehan and North Street schools going forward, once they are no longer needed, once the new elementary school is built and the students from those schools are moved over to the new elementary. That committee will look into the best use for the other two sites. I mean, we just kind of got this so nobody really has to, you know, say they definitely want to do it unless they do, but if there is anybody who wishes to, Mr. Fowler, anyone else?
It's fine.
Okay. If none of the other members have any issue, then we can nominate Mr. Fowler to be on this committee. So this is the Tewksbury North and Trehan School Reuse Committee. So do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Fowler as the Board's representative?
To move.
All right, I have a motion made, do I have a second? Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Somebody here, I'll sign on that. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, 29 Hood Road, Family Suite Special Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
To move.
All right, I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone here for 29 Hood Road?
Yes.
All right. Come on up.
Dave Shoffest, JRC Buildings for Robin Little for 29 Hood Road.
Okay, is that Robin Little that's behind?
No, she's on here today.
Okay.
Basically, she has an existing house, has an in-law apartment in the basement, she wants to sell the house and she wants to make a legal two-bedroom in-law apartment, and that's what we came up with the special permit for.
All right, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you're, well, what it says on the application and what it says on the plan are two different things. In the application, you talk about not you, whoever did this. Let me get it out. It talks about square foot, it talks about two bedrooms, it talks about it's all set, and it really isn't. None of the windows downstairs comply.
Well, they're going to cut the egress window in there once we get the permit, once we're able to get the permit.
That's not what it says in your application, though.
Okay.
So you're saying you're going to change windows?
We'll change those two windows in the bedroom.
You should put that on the plan.
Okay.
So they're not looking at a plan that we think isn't going to comply, going to fly. And in the application, it said that this, these items were already, this property was already done, the in-law was already built.
It's been there for since?
So all of this is on the deck out front?
Yes, it's all been existing, yes.
It's what?
It's all existing, it's been there for some years.
But yet we have a picture, it doesn't show it.
Is, you know what they're, I think the deck, if I may, it's confusing, looking on your picture, the deck is actually?
At grade?
At grade.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what, it's very confusing when you're looking at a two-dimensional drawing.
Drawing.
So that's what the, so it's a, does, what, eight-inch difference?
Yes.
I had notes on mine and I don't know where, what I did with it. Someone used, someone did a, an inventory of what is required, of what you can have, and 800 square feet is what your application says, and that's not, you've got 920 square feet.
Okay, yeah.
So are you looking for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom, it should have been the?
Okay, I'm going to ask you this pointedly.
Yep.
Why does the second bedroom, why is it marked as a den?
Because we were going to change it to one-bedroom, then we decided we were going to meet anyways, we'll go for the two-bedroom application for the permit.
As you know, and I know you know, a den with a bedroom, with a door, and a closet is what? A bedroom.
Well, they were going to leave the closet.
Yeah, so I mean, some people, believe it or not, some people have come in here and say, oh, it's only going to be a den.
Correct.
And the area from the egress for the main is common, right?
Yes, there's a door at the bottom of the stairs and upstairs to the hallway, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have, but at this time.
Okay. Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. Couple of the same items that Mr. Fowler brought up, the deck, I, he answered the question about the deck, and then obviously he's, so you say when you, if the permit's approved, then you'll?
Cut it into egress windows.
Cut it into two egress windows, drop the sill on those. Okay. And I think, I'd like to see the plans changed to put that as the second bedroom.
I could do that, yes, correct.
And I don't necessarily say I would call this a deck, I would call it maybe front landing, something.
Front landing?
Patio.
Yeah, patio, something that would, when you're looking at the plans, a deck, you think of a raised, raised structure, but it looks as if the driveway drives under the deck here.
Right.
That's all I had, thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you've got to replace all the windows, to make them all up to code, right? So front and back?
Yes, again, yes.
So it's got two, four, five windows and the casement window, right, as well?
He doesn't have to do them all.
Mm-mm.
You don't have to do them all?
He doesn't have to do them all.
Just two in the bedroom.
One in each room.
One in each bedroom, yeah.
In the bedrooms, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. The other question they had is, is the house on store?
Yes.
Yes.
Houses on store?
Yes.
Okay. So you're getting, looking at the picture here, you're getting rid of that second front door?
On the bottom right.
Yes.
That's, we can put a wind, that's the second means egress, we can change the door if we have to, but there's a main entrance up in the front on top, and that's the side entrance.
If it's in the front of the house.
Okay, so we can put a window, you take that and put a window?
You can only have one front entrance to the house, so you're going to have to move that to the side of the building, I believe.
Okay.
I'm sure the building inspector would make you do that anyway, so. So you're making it so that you want to make it approved, family suite?
Correct.
To sell?
Correct.
So there's stipulations as far as who can go into that when they do sell it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, so, I mean, obviously, as the other members have pointed out, the plans are a little disconnected to what's actually going on, but as we point out typically when we, you know, when we make our decision on these, we're just saying that, you know, we're given the approval to do it, whether you are allowed to do it is, you know, the building inspector's call, so if what you've submitted here needs to be fixed, then that's where you're going to find that out, and you're going to have to do so.
Correct.
Or you're not going to get the permits to do it or the approval.
Right.
In the end, so I'll agree with Mr. Ryder in that, once the revised plans are done, I'd like to have a set sent in to add to the file, because they obviously aren't going to look like what we have here, and if it turns out that anything that's on here or has been explained tonight is less accurate than what's presented, obviously it's going to make the decision moot anyways.
Right.
So otherwise, I'm all set. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
And make a motion to approve?
Close.
Close, close the hearing.
All right, so I have a motion to close the hearing, have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. As to the special, I mean, the family suite special permit request itself.
Again, I will approve this, and I can't say subject to, I would like to, but I'd like Dawn to make sure that what we said?
Yes.
Gets to the building inspector, that we approve this, not as the plan says, but as the plan should say. About the windows and at all, all right? Thank you, Dawn.
She's the boss there.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, this is 1583 Andover Street, Site Plan Special Permit Continued. The applicant has requested that this matter be continued to our August 5th meeting at 7:05. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to continue it to the 7:05 timeframe on the 5th of August.
All right, so we have a motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries, so that takes care of Andover Street. Moving on to Agenda Item, what time is it?
It is 7:40.
Oh, good. So moving on to Agenda Item E, 1625 Andover Street, Site Plan Special Permit Continued. The applicant has requested that this also be continued to the August 5th meeting, that one would be at 7:10. Do I have a motion to continue this till 7:10 on the 5th of August?
Motion to continue to the 8:05 date at 7:10.
All right, a motion made, do I have a second? Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries.
One minute.
Give it a second, sorry, we're running slightly ahead of schedule by one minute.
I'm going to fix that clock.
Unless someone's got a phone that reads differently.
No.
One second.
Haven't done that for a while.
All right, so moving on to Agenda Item F, which is 2131 Main Street, this is the special permit, Site Plan Special Permit, South Village Overlake District Special Permit Continued.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants on behalf of the applicant, B.T., G.O.G.L.L.C. Not sure if I can make this take five minutes to get to the next item or not, but really just here to just give an update to the board. Obviously, no new information was submitted regarding the concerns that came from the last time we were here, but we have met with the post office regarding the community mailbox, identified a location for that, building size has been shrunk, landscape plan updated, and we're just kind of working through the final tweaks between, with the lighting plan and things like that. So new information will be presented soon, and hopefully we'll be back here in August with revised plans and information. But ultimately, I'm here to request a continuation, this is really what I'm here to do, but figured I'd just speak on a little bit while I was before the board.
Okay, well, I know we had a couple of the housekeeping items, but the biggest one, the one you didn't update, but I will presume is being taken care of, is the part where the building is being shrunk, right?
Correct, the units in that first building?
Right.
Yeah, gets shrunk, so they're all the same size, yes.
Because, I mean, the other stuff's good, but if you come back in and it looks like that again, it's really not going to do you much good.
That was the first thing we took care of, so.
All right, so I'll just run around, just in case anybody has any other question. Mr. Ryder?
Uh, no.
Okay. Mr. Fowler?
All set. Just one question, how was the response from the postal, postmaster regarding your request?
It was fine, the applicant actually met with them, I didn't personally speak with them, but they, he showed the postmaster the plans, and they came up with a location, I believe, well, I know it was as you, as you planned, but you pull in, just past the commercial lot, there's a little island, which is, I believe, a spot we had kind of talked about at the last meeting, that's what they identified was, was what they would like to see, so that'll be reflected on our next plan set.
Okay, all right, like I said, I had my thought at the beginning, so I'm all set otherwise. Did you think it was, okay. All right, so with that, open it up to the audience, anybody in the audience with any questions or comments, since we opened it, we got to throw it out. No? All right, then we'll bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to close?
Nope, we want to continue.
Oh, I'm sorry, continue the, continue to the 8:05 at?
Seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to continue this till 7:15 at our August 5th meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a good date for you, I wouldn't even ask you, is that a good date?
That's fine, yeah, we'll have information shortly, yeah.
All right, you know what we're going to do, I'm sorry, what was the question?
What about Andover Street?
It would be two minutes.
Yeah, I got to stall, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to move on to old business, and we're going to discuss old business. Is there any other, any old business anyone wishes to discuss? None?
New business?
Open.
Any new business anybody wishes to discuss this evening? No? Mr. Fowler?
Just one thing, an observation that the residents at Tewksbury Common did an unbelievable job replacing the, all the shrubs that died over the winter. I think they took a chance to plant them when they did, back in late October, November. I think probably a high percentage, over 50, of them died, and I'm talking about 100 or more shrubs, but it's almost cleaned up now, and it looks very good, and I meant to tell you that today and about that, so, because I drive by there every day.
But an excellent example for so many others.
Thank you, for paving the way.
Yeah.
Where else was that?
All right, so that takes care of those. Oh, I guess, I don't know if it would be new, old business, but, you know, we did have our conversations about the new zoning bylaw, and, you know, that's kind of, kind of keep chugging along, but I feel less out in left field, having said the things I said, looking at Oregon, who has completely done away with the, basically, the single-family zoning, so I didn't ask for that, so I'm not, I'm not really off the reservation now. So that was all, I saw that in the news the other day, and I thought that was funny.
7:19.
All right, so then, Tom Flaner's report?
There was none this week, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you guys are not helping me with the delay tactics.
And I had a couple of correspondence items, but I don't have anything to add to the emails that were sent to you guys in your packets.
Okay, on the correspondence, did anybody have anything they needed to ask on them?
Yeah, would you, we were able to get ahold of the Serena Woods people?
No, I didn't, that was mid-last week, so I'll follow up with them.
I did speak to Mr. Mangano about the issue, and he told me that?
I read something.
The homeowners association there was supposed to be looking into it and getting back to you about it, so obviously it didn't happen yet, so.
Thanks for that, Dan.
All right, and I think as the members noticed, we, one of our original administrative action items, the one for Carter Street, came off the agenda, apparently they're not quite ready to come in and meet with us, so we'll see if that comes back on for the August meeting or not, but it's their bond, so if they don't want to come in and ask for it, that's fine, I guess, for now.
Seven one, you're good.
All right, very good. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item G, 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street, at all Andover Street addresses, Special Permit, Community Village Overlake District Continued. The applicant has asked that this matter be, oh, no, I'm sorry, this one we're going forward, sorry. So, somebody here for that? Oh, there we go.
State name, for the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants, here on behalf of the applicant, ECC Realty LLC. So we have been for this board, either in a conceptual form or through a full application submission several times at this point. Last we were here, there were a number of comments that came out of that meeting that had, well, been part of other meetings as well, but they were loud and clear when we left here, lattice density was a concern, the overall layout, the architectural appearance of this, and what we've done since then is to work on a, really, at the time, it's really a new conceptual site layout plan, is what we have prepared. So I believe everyone's familiar with the site, but just to refresh everyone, this is four, four parcels right at the intersection of Andover and North Street, there's several structures there now, several driveways accessed from both Andover and North, and what I, what I put up on the boards is just kind of a, I don't know, a timeline, if you will, of where we've started and where we are today, so the layout we have over here, this is the first thing we came in with, this was back in, I want to say October, early October, was the layout we started with, it's got 25 townhome units, and then this rectangle down here is a, about a 2,000-square-foot commercial space, which wasn't required in the overlay, but we thought that might be something that was desirable. So from there, we moved on, the commercial space was dropped, this was the most recent submission we had, was this layout here, that was 20 units with a single curb cut right here off of Andover Street, came in through, through here, accessing all the units in kind of a T-shape here, and came around with some visitor parking kind of scattered throughout. So as I mentioned, there was concerns about the overall density of the site, the space between the buildings, access, all these things were, were heard, so what we've come up with is this, the, I grew it nice and high, I guess, I'm not using, but this is the latest layout that we have here, so what you're looking at is 18 townhome units, the same size that we have been kind of presenting for the past several meetings, there's 17 by 30 units, there's 18 of them spread out over those four buildings, grouped in clusters of either four units or three units. Access has been, the access point has been shifted to align with Deering Drive, this has been a comment both from the DPW as well as TEC during their review, so access will come in here, there's some visitor parking spaces along this side here and along here as well, for use of the whole complex. We've kind of identified, loosely identified this area here by rearranging and taking advantage of this building down here, really, we've been able to kind of gain some, some land over here, maybe there's a possibility for, you know, we call it passive recreation, whether it's picnic tables or benches, or, you know, just something that could, could be used by the residents there. The two-way traffic through here that then turns into one-way traffic that goes around the center island here, and then there's a little offshoot that leads to three units up in the, up in the corner there. So the idea's been to kind of shift away, you know, one of the terms we heard, you know, through both of these first two, was kind of this wall of units along Andover Street and North Street as well, for that matter, kind of try and shift away from that, create more of kind of a community feel, like a smaller community that, that turn around in the middle, add some green space. From a waiver's perspective, what we came in with before down this unit here in particular, there's a 50-foot setback because we're budding a residential district that we were requesting a waiver for on previous layouts, that waiver's gone, in this, this current configuration here, fully complies with zoning setbacks, adequate separations provided between the buildings, we have at least 20 feet between all buildings. We were also requesting, I even took them off the list, there is, some aisle width waivers we had in here, this aisle here that was concerned about parking across from these units, so we had shrunk this aisle width down to 22 and requested a waiver for that. The only waivers we're talking about for the current layout at the moment is the height waiver, which is the regs call for two and a half stories, yeah, I'm sorry, two and a half stories at 35 feet, we just want the three stories while not exceeding that 35 feet, so not any taller than what, what is in the bylaw, just that third story, and then also Land and Servants Permit, which is a typical request, but certainly not a necessity, we can certainly file that permit if necessary. The reason this island is shaped the way it is, you know, this was just submitted late last week, so we have, we actually did receive TEC's comments, they seem to be generally, I won't say in favor of, but they, they acknowledged that this addressed some of their outstanding concerns, I guess, I'll put it that way. It had, we haven't received feedback from DPW Fire Department, but the reason this island is shaped the way it is and has a little, little bit of striping there as opposed, as opposed to curb is because we've driven the fire truck through there, so we're trying to make sure that it's accessible in that regard as well. So I think that, that, you know, oh, I guess some of the other outstanding things we had here, there was, there's still discussions with the LRTA about the bus turnout, that was something that we had last time, we've been kind of focusing on, working on this new layout to see how and what would fit, but we do continue to have a dialogue with them about whether it's something that they would even accept, where the applicant be willing to, to, to build it. So, and then from a utility perspective, we haven't got there yet, we really wanted to come, show you this layout, you know, really almost going all the way back to the conceptual phase, but get some general feedback, and if it was something that was worth pursuing fully developing, we would, we would do so, but I anticipate from a utility perspective, stormwater, all that, it to be a similar concept as far as where we tie in, the methods we use and, and things like that, we just haven't got to that point yet, so. I think that Johnny Canares, the applicant, is here, and we're both available to answer any questions and feedback you may have.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. Much better, I will say, I think this will fit nicely in that area. Obviously, still concerned on the, the design, what you plan in terms of the facades and some of the pitches and so forth, and what type of material you're going to use on that, so it's not just a straight, flat wall, so to speak, of, you know, a wooden wall, and then obviously the landscape that we discussed a few iterations back, along with this, I think this is a nice design. I just look at one thing I see on the island, you may want to pull that island out a little bit towards that last unit, so you eliminate someone coming in and going the opposite direction into that first bank of the four, right there, yes. Alonggate that island out, so people are not taking your immediate left, and you eliminate that potential of any collision, and also keeps the flow of traffic in that one direction.
Sure.
And I do like having the, pushing everything back, giving yourself a little bit of green space on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trash, is that right-hand side, correct, top, top right, trash location, dumpster?
So this is residential, so the intent would be that the town pick up?
Okay.
So each unit would house it internally and then put it out for?
So what is in that corner, building, between building two and three?
Two and three, oh, this here?
Yeah.
That, that's, well, I had it as parking until we drove the fire truck through, so that'll be part of how the fire truck will turn around, so that's just pavement, striped, striped, so there's no parking, we'll probably add some signs, things like that.
Okay, that was my next question, so we didn't get that, you haven't got the turnaround process completed by the fire department, I have you?
Has been reviewed, no. No, we've, we've done it internally, but it hasn't been reviewed yet, no.
Okay, all right. One of the concerns you brought up earlier is on building number one? one, on building one, yeah, building number one, unit one, with somebody backing out of that driveway, you know, backing into that traffic coming around the corner, you know, I mean, I actually like the design, but that's, again, close to that corner, but, you know, hopefully it won't be any concerns. I like the idea of reducing the number from 20 to 18. I think we talked about that. I know I did a number of times, and you had it down to four buildings here, now you're back up to five buildings, but I think it looks better in that design than it did on this one. So another question I had is, I don't see the location of the postal service box or fire hydrants.
No, in those types of things, you know, if this was roundly disliked, we probably wouldn't pursue this design anymore, but now, you know, so far, we've had some decent feedback, so we'll probably pursue, you know, that and other things, utilities and post offices as we move forward, so.
Okay, all right, good. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fallow.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just do just one other comment. You know, we do have some play here with the spacing between these and where these two buildings can be situated, so maybe there is an opportunity to slide that unit one further over from the entrance drive there, so that's something we can look at as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Fallow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased with the design, and it's interesting to look at how we started, as you mentioned. We have it in black, green and yellow and black and white on the board, so that, it looks tremendous now. A lot of green area, a lot more snow area for storage. Just the white open, you can see, and actually, when you come in, when someone drives in the driveway, the main driveway, and they're gonna, for the most part, they're all gonna take a right-hand turn, so they're gonna be looking that way. So I don't see, right now, with my eyes, the problem that could be in some people's eyes because they're backing out, but these people coming in are gonna be looking that way. I think that's a normal reaction. You look where you're going to drive, but I'd like the back end area from the three in the middle, I like what Mr. Rider has mentioned about the, making the island a little bit longer, and it makes sense, because I could picture someone cutting right across there, yeah. And have you had any conversation with the gentleman in, in?
This is McNamara.
Mr. McNamara.
We have not, but I believe he's here tonight, so I'm sure we'll...
I just wondered if you had any conversation, but, not speaking for him, but I would think what you have done should take, I hope, a lot of the thoughts and concern from him, but I'll let Mr. McNamara speak for himself. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and again, I think it's important to highlight, the original plan had how many units?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five, plus a commercial.
Correct.
And through the iterations we've done, we've come down to 18. So, you know, just as a reminder from, you know, when we talk about this, and, you know, the endpoint is what everybody kind of remembers, but we, you know, I think it's important to highlight that where we began in terms of density, design. I mean, you can't call what was there originally anything much more than ro, housing the way it was lined up, and what you have now is definitely more of a thought-out design that, you know, breaks up what's there, and, you know, again, because you're kind of going with a new concept, I'll say that we kind of went a long way with the, you know, how the buildings look, the amount of landscaping that we were going to expect. So what I would say is that all that needs to carry over now into when you come back in, if, you know, assuming that you decide to go forward with this one, which it sounds like everybody is pretty favorable to us in terms of, you know, going forward with this version, I think it's in your best interest to, you know, keep the things we've already sort of agreed we like, and just roll them into this new one, so we're not, you know, reinventing the wheel and having to say, you know, add these things on the top, put these things on the side, because obviously you do have more space now, meaning more of the building will be seen because there's more spacing between them. That's important, because you want, you know, we're gonna want it to be, to look nice from, you know, all angles kind of thing. And as Mr. Vitale, I mean, if you can, if you have room to move it, that's fine, but I'll agree too with Mr. Fallow that if they stay like this, I don't know that that's gonna be as big of an issue, especially as long as you make sure that the landscaping over there doesn't result in any kind of sightline issue for the person who's backing out, potentially backing out of unit one, you know, so they have full view of seeing the cars coming in, and the cars coming in have full view of that person if he happens to be backing out, or she, if it stays there. If it can shift, great, that's fine. I appreciate that the new design asks for less waivers, and as I said before, I prefer it if you don't need them, but the design makes more sense, so you ask for them than that you need them is the only way you can do what you're doing. You know, that's been alleviated with the reduction in units, the spacing and whatnot, so I like that much better. So, you know, I'd hope that if you go forward with this version, that you bring forward the things that we've discussed on the previous ones. I think we've gone a long way in that process, so I'd hate to see it have to start over. But otherwise, I'm all set, excuse me. With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Pardon me?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter McNamara, for the record, I represent Kathleen McNamara, who is the owner of 1015 North Street. I agree with most of the comments made by board tonight, and I wanted to thank Mr. Street, the developer, for some of the changes that have been made. My concern, having said that, my concern is still that this is, in my view, this is still far too dense on an acre and a half of property, and that concern remains. I also agree, I have concerns with the landscaping, particularly along the subject. This property, which is 1015 North, I just want to be sure that either headlights or ambient noise doesn't intrude too much onto 1015, onto North Street, and the traffic, the traffic lights, obviously, at night or during the wintertime, I'm concerned about that. I brought up a matter to Mr. French at the end of the last meeting regarding a large, couple of large dead trees that are right along the property line, and I asked if they, I would assume that they were going to be removed, because one of them has already partially collapsed onto the fence that separates my sister's property from the subject parcel, and the other one is large, and it's gonna, it only needs a strong hurricane or a windstorm to really do some damage. I reiterate my concerns about the drainage along the property line. There is still, and I think I mentioned this the last time I was here, and I brought it up in front of conservation, there is still a swath of two to three feet on my sister's side of the property that cannot be mowed. It still is unmowed from the springtime. It, I had some pictures that I took in June. I have them here if you'd like to see them, or I can bring them to conservation, whatever your pleasure. The water level has reduced somewhat, but you still can't get more in there, and even putting impervious pavement in this area, I'm sorry, pervious pavement in that area, most of the area along that property border is pervious now. It's some crushed stone, there's some grass, so I'm not sure how much of a difference the pervious, the pervious pavement will make in terms of the drainage, so I continue with my concerns there. But having said that, I think this is a vast improvement over where we were before.
Mr. Chairman, could I, maybe I could give you an idea of the difference between the pavement they're going to put there and the stone they have there. That stone was placed over existing gravel, dirt, silt, clay, whereas when you put in pervious, impervious pavement, you have, I forget the dimension now, a foot and a half of area below the hot tub, I like a better word. So the water has someplace to go, where now it doesn't. Even though there's stone there, as again, I'll say again, the stone was placed on top of just regular ground, nothing substantial to absorb the water.
Okay, I appreciate that. I would also assume that in a homeowner's agreement or a condominium association, there would be provision in there for regular maintenance of the pervious pavement, because I know if that's not done, it can degrade and turn into impervious fairly in a short period of time. But with that, I know this, you're not gonna make final decision at this meeting, so I'll leave my comments here. But I appreciate the efforts that have been made to this point.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience with any other questions, comments, or concerns on this? All right, any other further comments from anyone on the board?
I have one.
Mr. Street, as Mr. McNamara stated, I think looking at, when you do your design and your layout, and you can look at what your grades are, and see if you can take that property and get that into any type of, if you're gonna have to do any type of retention pond or anything there, get that to, now that you have much more of a setback there, you can get that water to, as we've done in a couple of the projects, get that off of that, you know, between the two parcels.
Yeah, we'll certainly look at that, yeah. I mean, the site generally, part of the challenge, I think, with the McNamara's property is that the site generally just flows.
Yes.
There's the weather, right, there's the weather for a reason, right? But, yes, we'll certainly look at that. I mean, at a minimum, we're making sure not more water doesn't go.
Right, you know, maybe if you can take, I mean, your drainage, if you potentially use that passive area, you know, put in a chamber of effective air to, instead of an open type of overflow on that end of the property, which makes sense, but we want to keep the drainage away from that.
Right, yep, absolutely.
Anyone else with anything?
All set.
And again, we will mention too, that, you know, one of the requirements is that their calculations are done so that, you know, they come in, that you're not creating anything worse than what you have now. So, you know, the engineering department isn't signing off on it until you've shown them those calculations. So it is something that is addressed anyways, whether anyone brought it up or not, you know, that's something that has to be signed off on, so, I'm trying to think, I think that's it. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board? Seven twenty is the time, by the way.
Did we have a motion to continue?
I made a motion to continue.
Seven twenty on August 5th.
Will you be ready for the 5th, I guess? Does that work for you?
I think we'll keep that, yeah.
Okay.
We'll shoot for that, yep.
I did before we leave, I just want to say, before we engage the architect to do full renderings and design a building that wasn't appeasing to the neighborhood, I printed out some samples of other townhouses. I don't know if you guys wanna look at the scene.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we addressed that in the last.
Yeah, that's nice, yep.
Nice, I mean...
Big variance in design.
It is.
Yeah.
No, I think this fits, as I stated earlier, fits the neighborhood, you know, you have some historic homes there, you have a new home just built across the street, and then, you know, in the new condos across the corner down on Deering Drive, I think these, if you incorporate something along these lines in that, that would fit that neighborhood.
Keep in mind, remember too, we've mentioned the things with the porticoes on top, like those design principles, so. So let me just do some housekeeping, because we sort of paused in the middle of the motion, but since you didn't speak before, but now that you've spoken, if you just state your name for the record, so it's in, on the recording?
John Canares, the applicant.
All right, so that takes care of that. You were quiet before, so I left it alone when it came to the table, then you spoke, so. So with that, we have the pending motion to continue this to seven twenty on August 5th. I have the motion made and seconded, so all those...
Well, seconded, I have one comment though.
Yep.
You have a plan, existing topography plan of the site that, you can put your hand on it, I'm sure.
You do, yep, absolutely.
I believe they put a swale in the backside of the garage parking lot, right in the corner, that goes out, and it actually goes all the way out down two or three properties. I wonder if that is still there, or if that is a usable, it is, look at that, look at that, thank you.
I gotta have you come up, you're not gonna be on the, you gotta come up to the podium, I'll pick you up on the recording.
It's a very back end of the property, you can, it is a, it's actually, at times, it's, it can be seasonal stream, but you can see the outline of it, and it does extend down through the, through the subject park property, thank you.
Thank you for that. I think it would, you'd be the decision-maker on this, but I think if that was cleaned up at the face before it leaves your property, it was put there 30 years ago, 25 years ago, and it relieved the problem that was on that garage's property for years. So maybe if that, you looked at that and you could maybe swill a little bit of the area.
Sure.
On your landscape area, you're gonna throw the water, not throw it, but, you know, divert the water, that's a better term, divert the water to that area, and that would solve a lot of problems.
Yeah, we'll certainly take a look at that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
All right, so, I just want to comment, Mr. Chairman, if I could. You guys aware of the developments coming up on Andover Street as well, down the road?
The other developments that are pending?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, there's several on this agenda, I believe, right?
This is the longest continuance delay.
It's for a delay.
So we have, we have the motion made and seconded, all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item H.
Thank you.
1420 Andover Street. The applicant has requested this to be continued to our August 5th meeting, so we have a motion to continue this to seven twenty-five on August 5th.
I kind of know the program.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And that brings us to Agenda Item I, which is 91 North Gate Road. That is a continued family suite special permit. We don't have anything new on this, so we'll just continue this as well. This would be till seven thirty. So do I have a motion to continue?
Who these, the two gentlemen here, I just...
Oh, we didn't have a response before, so if you guys are here, so 91 North Gate Road?
No, no, not us.
We're on the other side of the barricade.
Oh.
Oh, good.
Oh, so that's a different matter, let me just finish with this. So, 91 North Gate Road, do I have a motion to continue this to seven thirty on August 5th?
Yes, I'll make a motion to that, and I hope that this will be resolved, try and get this resolved this week. This, I think it's just some confusion in this. I think the building commissioner can resolve a lot of this prior to coming back to the next meeting.
All right, so hopefully we'll have it resolved. So we have a motion to continue, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none, motion carries. So that leaves us with, I don't know what this would be, we'll call it old business again?
It's under correspondence.
All right, so it's, we'll take it as any one of those. You guys want to come on up? All right, you guys, just state your names to the record, then the floor is yours.
Yeah.
Juan Valdouche.
Yesini Brahimi, Casablanca Services.
And you guys are in here on behalf of Berke?
Berke Management, outside contractor.
All right, floor is yours, gentlemen.
It was brought to our attention by the directors, that it was a letter sent out from the town, saying that they requested additional ground cover. I believe we worked, I worked personally with Kyle before.
Yep.
Before, we worked on installing the fence and installing the evergreens. We picked an evergreen that was solid enough to carry salt and to be more durable. So we're just here to kind of understand what you guys need, so we can do it.
All right, Mr. Fallow?
The job that you did was fantastic. It was double fantastic, because between the fence and the evergreens, the evergreens that are there now are doable, but I guess someone wanted, well, how are they gonna cut the grass? My theory, and this is what I talked to Ian about, I don't think you'd want grass there. It just becomes a nightmare. a, a nightmare to maintain with a weed whacker, or you could never cut around those shrubs in the fence, but if you just clean that up, put a matte surface down, I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you your job, but, and then puts a nice stone on top of it, it's done.
Okay.
Done forever, and it's clean, and if a, a weed grows through the matte and the stone, shh, not Roundup though.
Not Roundup, you wouldn't wanna get a lawsuit.
Show, show Home Depot some stuff.
Yeah, right, but that, that's our, my theory anyways.
Okay. So... Mr. Fatah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the problem was, in the springtime, that whole area down there was barren with nothing on it at all, the, the dirt was just, uh, flowing down onto the sidewalk and not maintaining, and not looking great at all, granted, there's some of the grass has grown in since then, but early April into May, there was nothing there, nothing growing, it looked, looked bad.
Okay.
So, uh, like Mr. Fowler recommended, anything that can be done there to, to make it look better, 'cause what you see is as you come down thirty-eight, is you see Applebee's on the other side of you guys, that looks pristine and nice, but then you come down to where Burger King is, as you come into Tewksbury as well, and it doesn't look great, it's not a good entrance look coming into Tewksbury, so I think anything that you can do there, and again, maintenance-wise, stone will be fine, it'll look consistent all the way down, and that can be done anytime, we're not having to plant grass, but, uh...
Yeah.
And hopefully it'll maintain and hold that soil, so it doesn't, you know...
Right.
Spill out onto the thing, and you lose all the roots from the nutrients you guys put in, so...
Yeah, lots of probably heavier stones, so it could sit there and doesn't wash, okay.
Mr. Rad?
Uh, one other thing, I would just, uh, look for some sort of edging on the backside of sidewalk, just to, if you do get anything on the backside, to hold that stone up, so it's not...
To the sidewalk connecting...
Yeah, where the backside of sidewalk is, and where it starts to, the approach that goes up towards those, if you put some sort of, uh, preferably, I would go with a heavy-duty edging, that's gonna hold back that stone, so it's not coming down on the sidewalk, they do plow that, uh, that is one section that is plowed in the wintertime, if not, it's gonna get shot back...
Okay.
Onto the property, so, kinda minimize the disturbance down the road.
Okay, so that, that was gonna be my only point, was just, I think the stone's great, 'cause it's, it's gonna be low maintenance once it's in, as long as it stays put, but it is a spot where you're probably gonna get, you know, the plows come, kind of flying by, and if they get hit with that, it's gonna blow everything around if it's not in there and set, so that's the one thing I think that, as Mr. Ryder pointed out, is that it needs to stay, if that's where you, if that's what you end up doing, it needs to stay there, um, once it's in, so it's not getting knocked out, or falling down on the sidewalk or anything, just because of the heavy rain, or, you know, nothing moves it, it's gotta stay, um, but I have no problem with that as the solution, you know, I mean, Applebee's happens to have a different setup, and for them it works, and they're able to keep it like that, and it's, it's nice, you know, you can have a different setup on the Burger King side as long as it's, its own version of well-kept, good, you know, good-looking, so that it evens off the two sides, um, you know, we're not looking for people to make, you know, Herculean efforts to try and make grass grow and maintain where it doesn't make sense, you know, that, that doesn't, that's not useful to anybody, um, so, but other than that, I think that gives you an idea of what we would like to see, um, and, anything else?
How about a timeframe, any idea on a timeframe, where can you expect this to get done on?
How much time do we have?
One day.
One day.
Next week.
I mean, reasonable timeframe?
By the end of the summer.
That's a month and a half.
So maybe by the September 20th.
Okay, okay. Did you have something?
So, yeah, if you'll just let us know, um, I guess by the September thirtieth, that could be...
Like, can we put that, I, I guess, can we put, you know, a date, just an end date that we buy this date?
I mean, again, using your data, you know, I, I guess, I think it would make more sense for us to say, you know, that, end of summer, so end of summer is...
September twentieth.
What's that?
September twentieth.
Okay, so, we'll use that as the date, it works, alright.
I just realized that the longer you wait, the more work you're gonna have to do to rub that all out now, so it doesn't grow...
We're gonna, we're gonna have enough time.
Okay, I have faith in you.
Myself enough time.
Okay.
So just, just, just so I've said, just so I've said it, um, we, we don't mind working with everybody to try and get, like, landscaping things done, you know, that need to be done, what we don't like doing is to have to keep asking and keep calling people in here, at which point we start to get irritated, so, if you get it done, as you said, by when you say, everything's fine, if we have to ask for you guys to come in here again, then we start to get irritated, so, we don't want you to become our next landscaping problem, so, don't be that, and let us direct that at other people.
Use it as an example.
Yes.
We'll get it done.
Okay, so, with that, so the expectation from, um, the permit holder and the board is that this will be done by September twentieth, no later.
And they'll follow up with...
And they'll follow up to let us know that it's done.
Yeah, and the business cards from the...
I mean, it's the same number you were using, it's just Ener is now in that position, that's all.
I had the email from Kyle, so I just need our emails.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, you know, when it's all done, shoot Ener a couple pictures, and then, you know, obviously, we'll all see it, I drive there, home deep enough, but, I think just something for the file that we could, uh, put in, yep.
I gotta tell ya, I had a number of phone calls from people saying how disappointed they were driving by Burger King, and how bad it looked, which brought us, brought it to us, which brought it to the board, which presented to you guys, that did not look good, coming into Tewksbury, coming off of four ninety-five, seeing that looking in disrepair, so, hence why we ca- called you guys and had you guys come in, hopefully you'll fix it, and then we'll all be, all be happy, so, thank you.
Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
I don't have a card, um, but you, um, a letter I sent you, um, it's, the information's in there.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we ran through the end of the, uh, agenda before, but if anybody has thought of anything in the interim, is there anything else, old, new, or anything, since we did it before, I can say...
Very pleased to see them come.
Yeah, that's, no, that's, that's good.
I had thought they were from, um, uh, what do you call it, what, North Gate Road, right, because there was a party in here that abutted North Gate Road, but I was sure they weren't, so...
Okay, alright, okay, so with that, unless anybody has anything else, take a motion to adjourn, so moved, I have a motion made, do I have a second, motion made and seconded, all's in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries, good evening.